So I'll call this evening's meeting to water. I have 75. Before we get started, I'd like to acknowledge our guardian angel in the back of the room who watched over us this evening. Thank you very much, Officer. Next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes, February 5th.
You want to accept this?
Second and a second for the discussion. In favor? Anyone opposed?
Back to, um, what's next?
Okay, onto the agenda proper, whole business. First item, reinstatement of preliminary plan. Cukas minus subdivision flat 27 lot, 197 Nichols Lane, Stanislaw and Brenda I Cukas applicants. Jim, can you make a statement? Jim, do you want to handle it? However you want to do it.
What?
This particular project received planning board approval back in September 2nd of 2009. The applicants did not proceed to file a final plan with the planning department within one year of preliminary approval. Moreover, they did not file a final plan with the planning department within one year from July 1st, 2017, the date to which the state of Rhode Island extended validity under their tolling legislation. Therefore, this plan has expired as of now. So the applicants are here tonight to have it reinstated at the point which it failed. The application was approved with conditions, three conditions actually. The first one is that the applicant received DEM subdivision suitability approval. They actually went further with that and they actually got a approved OWTS design. So that test holes have been done. The design is noted on the final plan here as the condition stated. Also, that the applicant incorporate into the plans and to any deeds to apply for the proposed new lot, a water availability certificate in the form that the planning board has approved. Over here, they have the standard water notation that appears on all of our subdivision plans that was approved by the planning board. And basically, it states that the applicant has examined the water availability in the area and they found that it's adequate to service a home, one residential home. The final condition that was put in place by the planning board is that access to this new lot is to be off of Nichols Lane and not the side street, side of the street, Nichols Street. So that has been put on the plan right here. We have accepted, water notation, driveway location. Everything is done in accordance with the planning board conditions of approval. And so tonight, we're asking the board to reinstate it. They will come back for a final plan review with me because it was delegated to the administrative officer back then. And so they're ready to proceed. This is really ready for final approval as it is right now. Just alter this and say final plan. We get it recorded, it's done. Now, the subdivision regulations, while they changed in 2014, they did not change in a way to affect this particular subdivision. So I don't really see any reason why you can't reinstate it. The other alternative would be if you choose not to reinstate it, the applicant could certainly come back and start the thing all over again and it would be done one way or enough. This is probably the most expeditions way to do it.
Any questions? Jim, is the OWTS on the... Is the question still valid?
Yes.
Anyway, board, any other questions?
No questions.
No question.
We answered mine.
Questions, folks? It's, uh... reinstatement doesn't really call for public participation, but is there anyone in the audience that needs to be heard on this application this evening? I see no hands. Okay, Jim, nothing else to add? Good, planning board, you taking care of the fourth motion?
I would like to make a motion and recommend that the board reinstate the preliminary plan as submitted and delegate final plan approval to the plan.
Motion. Second. Second, for the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, I'm going to recuse myself. I was involved in the preparation of the project notice of refusal. Who's speaking, Paula?
Phil.
So the next, the next item is an amendment to... approved preliminary plan, three lot minus subdivision of Sarah Land Company, flat 25, lot 54, Maple Court, Sarah Land Company LLC is our applicant.
Ladies and gentlemen, chairperson and ladies and gentlemen of the complaining planning board, my name is Margaret Hogan. I am the wall office of Hogan in Charlestown, Rhode Island. I am filling in this evening for my colleague, Tia Perola, who had a contact in her schedule. I am here representing the applicant. And I'll just give you a little bit of a...
Can you mark contact?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Sorry.
No problem. No problem. So we're here this evening. This is an application for a pre-need subdivision that was approved back in 2007, I think it was, quite some time ago. Did not proceed to construction. Obviously, we all live in possession and delayed. So we're now at the point of construction. And during that process, there became some confusion as to what was approved and what was not approved. And it's my understanding that town engineer or someone hired by the town to review it has come to the determination that the original plan approval required underground utilities. Rather than appeal that and get into a big fight, basically, the applicant has decided to just request relief if the board finds that was a condition to request relief from that. The rationale for that is if you drive down Maple Court coming to the terminus of that road and coming into the new subdivision, you'll find that the entire roadway in, of course, is above ground utilities. And putting in underground utilities in this location is going to require disruption to the last property before you get to the applicant's property. And you have a couple of photographs that I'll submit for your consideration. And I'll just show them to you one by one and bring them up next soon to the clerk. I've pre-marked them as applicants 1A, 1B, and 1C. So I'll review them with you if I could. Looking at this one, this first one, A, you'll see there's a telephone pole here. This is on the adjacent property. And right past the telephone pole in front of the vehicle is this property owner's driveway. And then I've drawn a straight line from that telephone pole to the property pole here. So basically, where that hard pen line is, is where we have to dig it all up in order to put underground utilities. So we would have to disrupt this gentleman's driveway, his front, what looks to be his front yard, which of course is not, but it looks like it is. And so we feel that's a major disruption. So that's A. Second photo is B. And that's standing somewhere in between the pole and this terminus, approximately like where that tree is right here, standing in that and taking the photograph towards the subdivision. And you'll see, again, I've drawn a hard line, pen line here as to, again, where the disruption would have to be going to the property. You can see the subdivision area all completed down below. And then the third photograph is one standing in the subdivision, looking up the hill, up the drive, if you will, towards that buddy property owner's household and illustrating the above-ground utility poles as well as the finished roadway and drainage, et cetera. And all that would have to be dug up in order to install these underground utilities. So I'm, first of all, bring those up to the clerk, yes? So basically, the request is to permit the installation of above-ground utilities to be consistent with the neighboring property and to be consistent, we would be with the original intent of the approval back in 2007. Owner is here, if there are any questions. I do know that your planner has given you some guidance in memorandum and has provided you with the original subdivision approval. I do note that conditions 1 through 5 do not include requiring underground utilities. So we would respectfully request the board's consideration of this request and either clarify that it wasn't required originally or to modify the approval to 4A. Thank you.
So Jim, can you provide a little bit of background on that? So it wasn't required in the initial, so the applicant's coming before us today because there's going to be a change on their plans?
I'm a little concerned, I'm a little kind of mystified how this even came, became an issue. I think, I think the applicant is concerned that because there was a diagram put on one of the sheets, sheet four or six, okay, that had a typical roadway section on it. And it looks like it was lifted right out of subdivision regulations. And if you look at that diagram, you're going to see things that are underground. You're going to see a fire alarm. I don't even think a fire alarm is part of, is proposed as part of this subdivision. You're going to see a gas line and it says if required. You're going to see cable TV, electric lines. And again, that's a typical roadway section. The way I looked at it is that it was put there for illustrative purposes, not to, not to show that all of these things are going to be a part of this particular subdivision. Okay? And so to back that up, I did a little research and I looked at the minutes pertaining to this particular project. There was no discussion in the minutes among the planning board members about putting the utilities underground. And as the attorney just pointed out, none of the conditions of approval specified underground utilities. It's been my experience over 20 years that when, that underground utilities, when required by a planning board, are something that is specifically called out, okay, by the board. Okay? So I then went to our subdivision regulations, which are in effect governing this, and I could just read exactly what it says in the subtext. And it says that the subdivision regulations governing review of this subdivision state that all electric communication, meaning telephone, fire alarm, or cable TV, as well as street lighting lines, may be installed underground at the discretion of the subdivision. I would rest upon that right there.
For sure.
Does it short, short of the board making a sufficient statement? Otherwise, it's their discretion to put them above ground. So I don't really see this as a big issue at all.
Okay. So after we do our discussion, what are you seeking? Do we need to make a motion or do we, just to grant that we agree that it could be above ground?
A motion, a motion would be appreciated to the, to the effect that the planning board sees no reason to require the applicant to provide underground utilities.
Right. Court?
I, I went to the property and I was a little confused at the roads there.
Okay.
So I looked at the map and I said, it's either a typo, something happened between Friday and Sunday, maybe I got the wrong drawings, that the roads in, drainage has started. And I just wonder how it gets that far? And maybe it's me being the, the roots in.
Don't they already put the roads in though before they, they start? Isn't that initially, this has already been phased in to a certain point, Jim?
Well, I think I see what Carolyn was driving at is that, I guess normally, if one was to put in underground utilities, you probably would have put it in earlier. But for some reason, again, like the, I don't know how this, this came to be an issue, whether it was a town engineer that peer reviewed this. And I might add too, that this road was reviewed, the construction was reviewed, inspected by Crossman Engineering, which is our consultant. And so, matter of fact, that's exactly how it happened. Crossman pointed out on the plans, he mentioned, pulled out the fact that underground utilities was shown there in the typical drawing. And so some, some people feel as though that if anything is put on a drawing anywhere that it definitely means that it has to be installed, okay? I don't, I've seen many, many plan sets in my day that have typical this, typical that on, on back pages that are basically there for illustrative purposes, not, not telling specifically the materials or whatnot that's going to go into this. And so, so I think out of the, because of what our engineer brought to the fore and because the applicant here wants to make sure before he does any more work on that, he just wants to get this clarified right now with the board, that he does not have to put them underground. So I think that's how I see it.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. That is, that is exactly it. It arose during the final inspections and the applicant was pretty surprised by the interpretation, so that's why we're here to get it clarified.
Are they, for the cause of... How now, now you? First, I'm a big fan of underground. However, what I see here is to impose that now, we're coming from the backfield, so to speak. You know, there's a lot of work that's been done, it's not specified. The rest of the neighborhood has above grounds. I'll just bite my lip and go along with the above ground.
I agree with you on that. I would prefer underground myself, but I would say that the folks who are going to purchase the home would see that it's above ground and they would have to weigh that themselves and so it's their, their choice, so, but I'm with you on that.
Please don't.
Members of the public, would anyone like to speak on this matter? Above ground utility versus telephos? And a cold zed?
Yeah.
Okay. So members of the board, are we done discussing? We're in a big motion? No, you're good.
I think the motion is recommended by the planning board on a request, of course, by the applicant to allow above-ground utilities.
Excellent. And a motion, we have a second. Have a motion, have a second. All in favor? Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you. We'll wait for our esteemed colleague to return, Jim? Yes? You may gladly have a go with that, sir. I'll let you introduce the topics.
Okay, next item on the agenda. A second pre-application. Major land development, Fairview Estates, AP 18 lot, 7K, 66 Fairview Avenue, Shoreline Properties Inc., applicant.
Good evening.
Hi.
My name is Patrick Freeman. I'm a registered professional, later engineer, American engineer, Joe Vitelli, the applicant. You brought this plan before you last month. So we've made a couple of changes reflecting your comments. We added a 40-foot no-cup buffer to the southern edge of the parcel 1 through 3 to increase that buffer in a little building space in that area. We also added a 40-foot no-cup buffer to the northern edge of parcel 4. Since the last meeting, we had an opportunity to talk to Gregory Whitman on the northern edge. He's provided a letter saying that he does not, uh, what's the word? He doesn't have any objection to a 10-foot open space above from the northern property, the northern edge of our proposed road. So I actually have a letter that I can hand out to you if you'd like. So we feel that this is advantageous for a few reasons. A, he doesn't, he has no objection to it, so he's okay with the concept. This allows us to move the road to where it's been previously cleared for grades, so it would allow us to save some trees and reduce the impact to the site. It would allow us also to sell the utilities to, so we had it shown to be located on this plan. It would allow us to keep that in the details of this road, use this thing to the flats. There's also a well that falls within the cul-de-sac that we'd like to save if it's possible. In addition, we've also compensated for the reduction of open space in that area by finding the open space required by the elements. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So again, recap for me, what's the, what's the distance around that nubly boundary?
So the plan we provided, it's a 30-foot open space. We actually can move the road down for this plan, but we had a meeting with the, our board two days ago. So this is the information everyone brings here.
Now, what's going on in that buffer strip? Is it, no, describe it to me. Is it currently vegetated?
It's currently vegetated. It would, as of right now, existing ground will drive goes, it's be within that 10-foot open space and then the right way, the ground will drive, that right way as it exists now. It's moving, it exists in conditions on site.
Are you proposing any plantings within that 30-foot strip?
It shouldn't be required, it's already wooded, but we can definitely add something within to along the edge of that right way to increase the buffer. But I'm thinking for three months.
I'd like to suggest that you consider that. I know this is a pre-application, but that would be my first thought. I appreciate you going to the abutted property owner and at least discussing this with him. Unfortunately, while it's great to have a document on file, this is hardly our commitment for subsequent property owners, so I still feel somewhat compelled to look out for that person's interest. And Jim, in your memo, you had something else you want to talk about that we were there.
Yes, in the, in the narrative that was provided to the planning board, they mentioned a residential compound private road. And so with this being a cluster design here, they, if, if they're proposing to have this road to be in private ownership rather than town, town-owned and maintained, it looks like the planning board has some latitude to have some relaxed standards in this, but we don't really know what they are. And so cutting right to the chase in my memo, I would suggest that when the applicant prepares a master plan, and keep in mind, we're at pre-application stage right now, so we're only here to guide the applicant as much as we can. We're not, we're not committing to any particular plan at this point in time, okay? They're going to bring us a master plan because this is a major land development project, right? And at the master plan, the planning board can, you know, tweak it further. I would recommend that the planning board advise the client to go out and have a peer review with Crossman, our engineer, in advance of the master plan, or maybe they're preparing it. And because they also mentioned here that they want to change, they're requesting a reduction in the length of grade from two and a half percent to something else. So because of the cutting and filling in here, even, even if this road is to remain a private road, because of the people who are going to be living there, okay, I think we owe it to them to make sure that this road has adequate drainage and I think a peer review is in order here. And it also could potentially have some impact on town road that it leaves too. So I think Crossman should really take a look at this. These folks can go forth and prepare a master plan and then, then provide that to Crossman to critique and then come back to the board at some point in time. But like I said, the two issues I pointed out in my memo were the open space, which now seems as though they're going to go back to, at least on the northern part there, they're going to go back to the same dimension that they originally came to the board with last meeting, with the 10-foot, or was it 9-foot, I believe, last time.
No, I don't interpret that way at all. Is that your proposal?
That is what we were intending to do, yes.
Okay, so we have an issue. Because I don't really care what the abutted property owner has to say, not in terms of accepting 10 feet. You're showing me 30 feet right here?
Yes.
I think that's consistent with our direction last time on. Why are we going backwards?
There's a few reasons. So we, on, let me bring up another plan here.
Thank you, Jim. It was not clear.
We did a proposed profile for that road section. And as you can see, there's some pretty significant cuts within the first 400 feet of the proposed roadway, roadway. And that's mostly caused by the fact that we pulled that road 20 feet into the hill. Fairview Avenue is fairly flat, so when you pulled that, the entryway, 20 feet this way, 20 feet suddenly, it, it doesn't affect the beginning of the road, but it affects the first 400 feet by pulling it into that hill. It creates some very steep cuts. So going back to what Jim said about the two and a half percent, it's required to be two and a half percent within 150 feet of the center line of the intersection of the road. So we're holding two and a half feet for 75 feet instead of 100 because otherwise it would push that whole portion of the earth, probably deep into that hill. It would pull it even farther into that hill and you'd have a, a valley essentially. So that's one reason we're asking to move it back because it's working with the land as opposed to against it.
So, the other planning board members, on the reflect?
I, I went, I went to the property and all this discussion also lends itself to the fact that it looks like it's going to have to be some blasting or something going on in there. I mean, there's, and, and, and that duplex that there, that there, it's vacant and it's just questionable. It's, it's not maintained.
Joe, back in, do you?
I'm Joe, the town owner. I bought the property or renovated it, family.
Yeah.
And one of the gentlemen that worked for me eventually did sell it for, you know, hopefully, we're going to have pretty many lots once they sell. But that's in the middle of being renovated. So they're all day working on it. And the house was built in the 90s. It wasn't an old house, but it was not maintained, so.
So is the ledge that's all around there, is anything happening to that or is that going to?
We're doing test holes tomorrow, so we'll have more information on that, but we're trying to avoid blasting under all circumstances. I don't believe that's going to be too. The only concern is if we do hit wedge in the proposed roadway, it may require some additional work.
Some additional work and that also limits the water, the wells?
The wells aren't going to be located in areas rich in extreme cuts or fills, so that shouldn't, shouldn't be an issue.
Well, I, you know, optimizing the place you put a well is what we're talking about. We're talking about feeding the properties.
There are existing wells on site already. They were resolved for the intent of the yield plan, so they're not... They were resolved for the intent of the yield plan, so they're not, all of them aren't ideally placed. We do have the existing well that you can see here that services this dwelling and there's another well in the actual cul-de-sac that serves the other half of the duplex. So there are wells on site. We're repurposing that existing well for the proposed single family duplex. We need an additional well potentially, but they do have wells on site.
Any other questions?
I mean, I want to read the question, but why not three duplexes instead of two singles and two duplexes and then you have one for open space, I guess, agreeing with the chairman? 10-foot open spaces and what?
As far as the, doing three duplexes and instead of the two, there are single families, the lots are fair and comfortable size. It's not exactly the same. It's 40,000 square foot for a single and 60,000 for a duplex. So the 20,000 square foot are so washed that it doesn't, due to the location of the existing duplex, trying to fit two additional duplexes when actually I think it would make it worse as far as the open space goes. I'm sorry.
The only question I have, and I read the minutes, so I didn't see your presentation last, last time, was about the low and moderate income housing. This is a six dwelling unit. Did y'all talk about that? So six dwelling units kicks in, the low to moderate income requirements with the town coptation. So is that why you're doing this duplexes in order to hit that? Did y'all, did y'all talk about that, Jim? Am I off base here or?
No, you're not. Very much not because I didn't, didn't think about that. That's a major.
Because it's a concern for coptation.
It could, that's our exclusionary zoning ordinance.
Right, right.
So they, they're supposed to have one more unit, seven.
Just, just putting my two cents, though. I, I just, we haven't had, we've been working on other applications and so I know we haven't had a lot of this type of development recently, but that, I guess, six years ago was a major concern of ours, making sure we had our low and moderate income housing needs met in our town. So I'm just bringing that up just to make it clear.
The yield plan, just to clarify, allows you six units. You wouldn't be able to, I don't believe, in the ordinance go to seven. I don't know how that works.
So I'm reading our description. It says a four-lot subdivision is classified as a major subdivision because it consists of six dwelling units. Our low and moderate income plan is based upon the number of dwelling units, and so it was at six. And so I think that triggers it. Am I correct?
Correct.
So confused look on your face as if you guys didn't have any plans for the.
Well, it's, it's still, it's just you're preliminary. It's okay. It's pre-application. So this, you've come to here in the boards and so, so I'm just raising the.
Anything else, please?
Any project narrative that said that there's no historic, into my glasses, there are no known historic or archaeological areas on site. Now, you've had that researched or were just going by the fact that nobody's come up and said?
Um, it's not.
So I did, I did see, we talked about this, but I did see that you pulled it back away from Butch Rock.
Correct.
As I stated last time, when I started school in the early 50s, Butch Rock and Goat Rock were Native American original areas.
Right. So we've actually spoken, well, Joe has spoken with both the conservation as well as the land trust, where we provide access to those sites. We won't be disturbing the area, but if people wanted to go to those locations, we can, we, we're talks are made in that.
Okay, thank you. Next thing is the road. Even though it's a private road, it will be built according to the specifications of a public road in case it ever gets turned over?
It's per the guidance of the subdivision regulations. It's a local private road, but it does meet those guidelines without the 150 foot in the intersection as we have it right now.
You mean a residential compound private?
Yes.
On the appendix table, next to table one that gives those from our rates? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
I would be suggesting that there be mutations on the plan that the road will never be accepted. This is how we end the hardware. It's okay to have a residential compound road, but don't ever come to the town.
As my concern is that it ever wants to be turned over to the town, and that means massive reconstruction.
I don't even want the town to have to consider it. So mutations on the plan is completely appropriate. Thank you. Anything else, board members? It's a pre-application. There's no comment required. Is there anyone in the audience who thinks it should be heard in this application? Harvey?
Harvey, good for the conservation permission. I did get a chance as I bailed out to look at the property I was interested in, it was going on to the rear and east of the property with Witch's Rock and the, appeared to be a pond or something there. It looks like maybe it's a print area, basically. And so I think you have both natural and cultural elements that are quite important and going with a cluster design and creating a large chunk of open space around that is quite significant. It's quite dramatic. The, I didn't measure, but that this is just overhanging vertical cliff 30, 40 feet there right down to this wetland. And I mean, I've gotten a little bit more experience about what Native America stuff is about, and I saw a lot of stuff there that I would certainly say, there's no doubt that's, that's Native American. And during that time, I said more, but I don't think it's much of an issue to the extent that they have a way that they can get their project and also preserve that. So I would just support the idea of a cluster here and finding out a way to make that, make that work. Thank you.
You're good. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Yes, Paul.
I want to thank the board for paying attention to the road. I'm also concerned that down the views, it will be requested to be a town road since that has occurred in the past and I'm sure will occur in the future. So I do want to make sure the road is well-built. But on top of that, after hearing about the rock that is being preserved, I don't know how you get to it, but I would assume some people would use that road, whether they're supposed to or not, unless there's a path getting back somewhere. So I would be cautious of that, both for the homeowners that will buy houses there as well as for the road might be used when it may not be wished. So it's a concern.
Thank you. I think that's a very valid concern. Fairview Avenue is in that way, and if anybody was to come in and not go down that road, they would have to park up Fairview Avenue. That would be a hazard. So what I'm seeing is in the lower right-hand corner is a gray area. Is that easement or?
It's part of the open space.
Part of the open space, so somebody came that could park in the cul-de-sac and walk up to the rock?
We haven't finalized the details of where somebody would park. We don't really, I don't want to say for sure whether or not we're going to have parking. I don't believe that's our intention.
I think that would create a liability.
I agree.
Yeah. I think the town would have the same concern, yeah, that potential existed on town land. So I think if it's going to be a homeowner's project, I mean, associating private roads with private road, nobody belongs down there unless everybody did, right? The vampires too.
The whole thing is, it's being sold is the fact that the Witch Rock and further up the street Goat Rocks are being left. It is ceremonial or whatever. It's, it's, there's no way to get access.
How did you get that when you were there?
There was nothing in, we just walked through. Maybe 55, the back, when all of there was Washington truck, that was it.
All right, let's leave it then. You need to work that out. Have you heard that concern? Anything else?
I thought you could like sell tickets for Rockland while there. Pretty impressive.
Okay, any other questions for us? It's pre-application. There's no action required. You have any concerns?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Very nice.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, development plan review for Voltaic Solar Energy System, Rebbity Energy LLC EP7, block 62, 62A, 63, 1-5 Frontier Road, Rebbity Energy LLC applicant.
Good evening. I am attorney Karen Brown. I'm a partner with the law, Mark Rose is Ryan, and I'm here time on behalf of Rebbity Energy, the applicant. Tonight, we are here for development plan review of a property located at the corner of Frontier Road and Main Street. The property consists of three lots. In total, it's got 64 acres. We were before you previously in November of 2019 for our pre-application meeting. Tonight, I brought with me our team to go through the project in much more depth and to answer the questions that you have. Just a very brief overview to refresh your memory. The property is zone the manufacturing. The proposal is to develop the property as a 15-megawatt solar project. The project is allowed by right in the manufacturing zone, so there's no zone change required for this project. There is a single residential dwelling that exists on the site. It is a rental unit. It is a, there's no, there's no change to that particular residence, and the tenants who's going to them, they are supportive of the project. The project does meet all other dimensional requirements, zoning and other applicable So just to go through briefly who we have with us tonight, I have president of Rebbity Energy Ralph Lambo, along with other associates of the applicant company. Audie Osgood is here from Dupree Engineers. Edward Cimental is here, who is our land use zoning and planning expert. John Carter from John C. Carter Landscape Architects. Scott Rabidow is here from Natural Resource Services, our wetlands expert. Also Nicole Malanfi from State Environmentalist here as well. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Audie Osgood to go through some of the details of the proposal.
Thank you. For the record, Audie Osgood, professional engineer with Dupree Engineering in Cranston, Rhode Island. For those who were here before, I just want to start out with a couple of minor changes that have been made to the plan since we were here at pre-app. The solar field on the northern end of the field is being extended to the north by a couple of acres, so there's a little bit of additional panels that could point to about an additional megawatt of yield and about an additional two acres of proposed clearing on the site. Otherwise, the plan is pretty much as you saw it at the pre-app. So just to get everyone before you into the business community site, Main Street, Interstate 95 along the north side, Frontier Road, former is the entire southern boundary of the property, and Maxon Hill Road runs along the eastern portion of the site. For scale, this is approximately 2,200 feet of frontage along Frontier Road. The site is just over 64 acres. Wetlands were flagged as noted by Natural Resource Services, so if any questions on those, I will defer to, to those guys. We have done a class one boundary of the property, so the plans are based on that. We have those here if there are any questions on that. Site has been used historically as a golf practice facility, so the bulk of the central portion of the site is been cleared and was regraded and shaped for that purpose in the past, so there's quite a lot of rolling terrain out here that some of which would need to be reworked. We try to minimize that to the extent that we can to limit earthwork. There would be some, like I said, the field is primarily located in this cleared area. There are some limited clearing proposed along the north on this portion of the property. That clearing totals approximately 9.8 acres, which is about 15% of the total property. So obviously, no, no work or clearing is proposed in any of the wetlands or the associated buffers. The total fenced area for the project is approximately 37.4 acres, which is about 58% of the overall property. We've completed an engineering design for stormwater management and that's been submitted to DEM. They have not begun to review that yet, but it's, it must be getting close. It's been there for six weeks, I think now something, so. So take a look at the overall existing conditions for just a minute here. There are two existing stormwater control BMEs on the site that were installed when the work was done previously for the golf course. We're proposing to continue to use those. There are a couple of existing natural depressions on the site in which stormwater drains to belve and maintain as they are, as far as shape and real minor regrading those to facilitate some out-control features, but otherwise those areas will remain as they are. They'll, they will continue to function much as they do today as far as a, as a depression. They won't be a stormwater basin, but they'll, they'll provide some stormwater, natural stormwater contamination or runoff of the site. The proposed interconnection for the system is out here in the southwest corner of the site. Find the overall, slide up from in here. So at this interconnection location will be a few above-ground holes as we come into the property. Those are required to be above-ground because of the equipment that's mounted on those. And then after that, all electrical work will be underground throughout the site. There's an existing electric transmission line that cuts through this edge of the site. And there's also existing poles and lines out here in Maxon Hill Road, so the applicant is working with National Grid to relocate those lines to the existing poles in Maxon Hill Road so that this portion of the site can be utilized for panels. Per your regulations, the panels will have a maximum height of 12 feet, average height of probably eight to nine feet. We met with the fire department. They had no concerns with the project. We submitted copies of the engineer clients to them and expect to get a letter of, back to them to acknowledge that they have no issues with the design, so we'll provide that as soon as. so we'll provide that as soon as, as we know. As with all solar projects, there will be construction traffic associated with the earthwork and installation of the panel and the electrical. After that, the traffic will be limited to separate to maintenance traffic for any repairs that need to be made to the system and periodic mowing. And I believe periodic washing of the panels usually once a year, so. It doesn't show on this plan, and I can pull up one of the grading plans that provides more detail, but there's a pretty significant grade change right here in the center portion of the site from a higher area to a lower area over here. The slopes are averaged probably around 20% of the roll over there, which is too steep for placing the panels. So we're proposing to regrade that slope to 15%. So there will be a little work essentially in this central portion of the site. And then some minor reworking out here just to take out some of the features that were associated with the existing golf use on the site, the previous golf use on the site. No water sewer services proposed and the lighting is proposed on site. And we have been working on a decommissioning estimate. I know that when we were here for the pre-app, the board mentioned that they were also working on more of a process and a more definitive way to establish those decommissioning estimates. We've put together an estimate of approximately $190,000 based on a previous, one of the previous projects that we've done here in Hopkinton that the board has approved, but we'd like to learn more about how you've advanced with the process of establishing decommissioning estimates, so. I think those are the key points from an engineering standpoint. Provide a little more detail on the existing conditions on site. There are a couple of existing buildings that'll need to be addressed and some driveways, things like that. But if the board has concerns with those, otherwise I'd have to answer what questions I can.
Right, go ahead, Karen. Board, any questions for this particular expert?
Can you show us where the additional panels are at?
Primarily right here. I think there might have been a row or two up here and the rest of them really are natural section of the site.
Can you speak to the buffering that we were referring to?
So I think I could address that somewhat, but I think it'd be best to let John Carter, the landscape architect, address the buffering questions, if that's all right?
Well, you can assist us with a related question, which is, and we may as well get it right out on the table right away. What's the proximity of the panels to, forgive me, I think I have my directions right. Northeastly corner, isn't Buddy Propp there? Yes, that one right there?
Yep.
Eastly corner along that road and the separation distance to the ramp leading to 95. How far are those panels from those lines?
So these panels are all at least 75 feet from the on-ramp here. And there's a grade change. This is a cut section through here for this ramp. I think at the highest point near the middle here of the, actually not quite in the middle, a little bit in this direction, I think, is six or eight feet. The site is higher than that. And I know Mr. Carter has some photographs of what the view would look like from that direction. 100-foot buffer on this side, panel setback to the property line. And I'm sure someone else could address it with more detail, but I understand that there have been at least one or two meetings with this landlord about buffering. They're going to be doing some additional plantings in this area. But my understanding is that there are no concerns at this point with clearing this area for, limited clearing for shade management on these panels. And the 75-foot setback on this side from property line to the closest panels. And I don't have a figure that shows it. Maybe take a look on the area over here. Does show a little bit. The homes on this, these properties are all set back from the street 100 feet or more. Some of them are significantly more than that. Not to say that we shouldn't be buffering from them just because of the distance they're set back, but it is a factor in how visible this would be to those waters, so.
Penny, what is your answer? Boys, I would suggest we just move to the next applicant.
I don't know if this would be his question for you or for somebody else. You're an engineer, so I'm just going to jump right into the engineer thing. Has there been any thought put into line injuries instead of the stationary ones?
I'm not that kind of an engineer and I have no idea. So just to be honest, I'm sorry. Can you read the question? I'm just looking at ideas. I'm Rob Paul from Revity Energy.
I was just curious about if there's any thought put into line injuries instead of the larger stationary ones. There's been a lot of talk about the amount of sound emitted from the gigawatts.
Yeah, so we're not, we're using stringed rivers, not the central bank. Is that referring to stringed rivers on the back of the panels or within the middle of the site? That doesn't seem to be used. We don't use the big central bank.
You don't use this, okay.
We don't use the big central bank, so.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one thing. This is, remind me, primary aquifer zone, exit one? Primary?
Could be on the edge.
Is it on the edge?
Yeah. I recall it runs through the property.
It runs through the property.
But not, not only a portion.
Only a portion, okay. So that brings me to my concern. We've had a similar application of similar size where we spent a lot of effort thinking about containment of the natural oil that is used. And so I don't care if it's natural. It is still over a aquifer zone. And just FYI, I think it should be contained.
So great question, great concern. But we actually have a representative here from Sage Environmental.
Oh, that's right.
To report, absolutely get to that, I promise.
And I'm sure they have a similar kind of containment, so.
Let's hope so.
Let's hope so. Just sorry, I thought you were that kind of thing.
No, no problem.
That's all right, so, okay, thank you.
So just for the record, this development plan review application, in addition to the plan set, also included several reports, including stormwater manager report, solar erosion sediment control plan, stormwater system operation and maintenance plan, and environmental impact statement, as I just referred to, from Sage Environmental, and a regulatory compliance report drafted and submitted by Cimental Consulting. We also, in response to the board's concern at the last meeting about National Grid's appetite for this project, did reach out to National Grid and did receive confirmation via email that we did submit stating that the project is feasible and would be, National Grid would accept it and would work going forward to make it happen from their end. So that is also in the record. Also, just today, and I'll pass it out for you to take a look at, is a letter that we received from Brown Historical Preservation stating that the project will not have any effect on any store features or properties. So at this time, I'd like to hear from Ed Cimental, who will go through his report and also talk to you about comprehensive plan and zoning consistency.
Good evening. So a lot of the reports, I understand it's rather obvious to this board. This board knows this community better than anybody else, but at least from my perspective, it's the first time that I can say, this board is aware, respectively, because I've worked on several solar projects here. And I understand the concerns of this board. I understood the concerns of the council, concerns of the public. And that is that this community is trying to control replacement of solar facilities. That's why you impose the restriction that if you want to locate a residential district, not only do you need to evidence the purpose of this board that the solar facility is appropriate on a specific site, but you also need to get a zone change with the council. And now you've also minimized the amount of acres that can be used. And the reason being is very simple. You want to preserve the rural character of the town of Hopkinton. And typically, your residential properties are the areas which are most forested. And it's the vast, the large acreage of the property. That's, your communities are probably about 80% to 90% zone residential. All the other zoning designations comprise the remaining 10% to 20% with your commercial and the manufacturing zones. Actually, imposing are a small component of that. What you've done is you've denoted in both your concrete and plan and then your zoning ordinance where these sites are located, where they would be most appropriate. This particular site hits on several points. Not only, and I can say this on the record, is it a by right land use, meaning not only is it dimensionally compliant, but it's a permissible land use. But more importantly, it's an area that's already been well deforested, so there's minimal tree clearing going on, which has always been a concern of both this board and the council. So when they asked me to get involved with this project, I am a proponent of solar. I don't make any amends about that. But I said, from a regulatory perspective, because that's, in the end, that's what you need to do. You need to comply with the local community's regulations. I rarely pursue or support a solar facility because it's difficult to meet the requirements that we prohibit the land use. That's why we'll seek for the zone change, which is still very difficult. Well, if you can, you try to seek out a facility that's either condition commissory or if you could, or grant something, one that's permitted by right. And that is this particular site. So from a regulatory perspective, when I was reviewing this and going through your zoning ordinance, what I did was to provide a full analysis is was to compare the solar facility, because it is a passive land use, to the other types of land uses that would otherwise be by right land uses. And there was a little bit of also conditioning commissory uses, but I just wanted to compare apples to apples of by right land uses. And I've incorporated that into my report because this is a manufacturing zone. So this is the area where you would anticipate, actually, you want heavier type industrial land uses. So if you think about that from a perspective of what could go here versus this passive use, it really, there is absolutely more intrusive land uses there. Now, that took me as a threat. I'm just comparing apples to apples under your regulations. I'm a proponent of solar. I think it's a passive land use. I don't think it's a competitor to the neighborhood when we compare the types of uses that could be located here. I believe it's fully regulatory compliant. I think the board could support this. We're under the standards of the development plan review. There are several standards we need to meet. The first one is really the one that's within my jurisdiction expertise. The rest go to the environment, the engineering, concerns about spillage and drainage and all those things. The other experts will address those. So the first one is really consistency with the comprehensive plan and consistency with your zoning ordinance. Ready to cover it, cover to cover? I understand the three main things is we want to locate them in the areas where we deem them appropriate. B, we want to protect the rural character of the community. And then the third one is we want to be aligned with an appropriate infrastructure, rural infrastructure. As been noted, we're aligned with 95, Frontier Road. All the traffic will not be circling into neighborhoods. Most of the traffic is during construction anyway. This type of land use has very minimal traffic intrusion post-construction. The landscape architect can speak to the visual intrusions. We know that's always a consideration when it comes to solar facilities. Once again, though, I keep in the back of my mind, the intrusions that could come from any type of industrial commercial use that would also be by right in this development. Having stated that, I can only state on the record that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan and absolutely consistent with its own regulations.
Other specific questions? If the board or council wanted to ask any further questions?
Penny, board, any questions for this expert?
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to hear from John Carter from John C. Carter Company about landscape planting and buffering.
Thank you. For the record, John Carter, I'm a registered landscape architect, 96th Boston Road, Mayor Gansel. I'm going to switch up the graphics and put that one up.
I take it you made the other one sit, huh?
What's that?
I take it you made the other one, so if you're going to declare them back.
I am absolutely right. A little more color, color.
Oh, there you go.
Do you have any? I have some reduced property. Do you want to say?
But I think that the public would like to see them out.
Any pardon?
I think that public would like to see them out. You want to go to the other?
I'll point to them, because they're at least beautiful. There's only three special shares. So I think that Audi did a nice job of explaining the existing conditions. I know that most of you being local are probably very familiar with it. But just to go a little, look at it from a different perspective, my perspective. The site is presently a golf course. And as such, it's primarily cleared and was managed on a regular basis. That's an opportunity that we don't always get with these solar developments. And the biggest concern often is the amount of tree clearing. So this was able to provide an opportunity to do a facility like this and not clear a bunch of trees. I walked the site, the entire perimeter of the site and the interior of the site and sort of assessed what vegetation was there and so forth. I don't know how long it's been abandoned. You may know, but long enough that it's starting to re-vegetate. So there's a significant number. I counted, I got around 100. I won't swear by that number of evergreens that are starting to re-vegetate out there. White pines and red cedar, six to 10 feet tall. And they're kind of perfect, almost nursery specimens. They're all coming out from this nice field. It won't be forever, but presently. So part of what we looked at, and my first reaction was, wow, we can move these things and reuse them. It's kind of a win-win. Instead of bulldozing them down, we get to reuse them. And it, rather than the developer buying plants from nurseries and bringing them in to do buffering. So that was one of the things that I recognized. The other thing is I know there was some talk about the oil that is in the panels and...
Well, not the panels.
Big pardon?
They're not, the oil's not in the panels.
Or in the transformers.
Transformers, right.
Yeah, way out.
Well, it's okay, we've covered it before. It's fine.
No, I understand. I understand there are transformers and there are some sort of natural oil. But what came to mind was, you know, the general aesthetic of a golf course, for most of us, is this very sort of bucolic place and it's green and, you know, rolling topography and so forth. But golf courses are very intensive land uses and require excessive water, pesticide, fertilizer, mowing and so forth. And this use will not require supplemental water, won't require, for use fertilizers or pesticides. And the mowing that occurs is the regular maintenance is more on a monthly basis than the intensity of the sort of golf course. So it's a little, in that respect, it's a little lesser use intensity of the, intensity of the property. So I think, as Audi pointed out, the on-ramp northbound 95 bounds the property to the east, excuse me, to the west. There's vacant land to the north that's undeveloped residential lots. There is one residence directly to the north in the sort of northeast corner. And then on the, on the east side, there's several residential homes. They're set, mostly set back 100 feet approximately from the road. That's Maxon Road. And there's pretty extensive vegetation. Some white pines primarily disuasive. Most of the trees that surround the site are maples, some oats and white pines. To the south, there's an extensive planting and it's primarily white pines. And you can see that in one of the pictures on the next sheet. And they're pretty significant in size. And so you really can't see anything into the site looking from the south. So then we're asked, you know, what can we do to mitigate the visual impact? So... So the two places, or three really, that I would see would be significant, would be, what would you see from the ramp, or the, the on-bond ramp? What would you see from the houses across the street to the east? And then the third is, there's one resident that we met, I met with the owners, and Ian and wife, and talked about what we could do for them. So on the on-bond ramp, and I think Audi alluded to this, on the sheet here, number one, that, that I have, refers to this photograph at the top, and if you look at the photograph number one, there's a rod, a survey rod, survey rod, thank you, and it's, it had a ribbon, it's six feet, and that six feet is the height of the grade change from the highway. So eye level from a car or a truck, the vegetation you see behind it is primarily in the road right away, so it's going to stay there, and it's not going to get cut. So at that spot, at the sort of northernly end of the on-ramp, I believe between the change in topography and the vegetation that's going to remain, I don't think you would need to do anything, I don't think you're going to be able to see into the site from there. Also, the traffic's only heading in one direction, and you really can't look back as you, as you're driving. And then the next, if you head on the south, for the south on the ramp, we took this photograph standing where the number two is, and that's a little different, because you'll see for number two, we have an existing, and we have a rendered proposed post-supplemental planting. So the same thing, we use the six-foot height as a reference. It's a mix of red cedars, some white pines, which are evergreens, and a bunch of deciduous, and a bunch of deciduous understory shrubs. These are worst-case scenarios, these are winter, these are leaves off. The time of year when the leaves are on, that understory would be dense enough by itself, I think, to screen it. But what we're proposing to do is planting within or behind the existing plants to fill those gaps in, wherever there's gaps you can see through, and the proposal is to probably use most of the plants that are already grown out on the site, like I said earlier. The only view from the south would be looking in the entrance. Right now, you look in the entrance and you see a restaurant, and you see their little pigeon putt, or whatever it's called, it's next to the little mini golf thing. So if you stand at the entrance, where I put the number three, and you look at the photograph number three, to the left is the existing view, and to the right, we're just proposing the plant, showing where we're proposing on the planting plan, and we'll come forward with a more accurate planting plan, but that represents what it would look like if we planted in the area designated on here. So we have a key, and we have three different classifications, we have vegetation to be removed, vegetation to remain, and vegetation to be added, just the three different sort of gradations of green. So at the entrance, there's opportunities to plant that will allow us to create something very close to what we're showing in that photograph. So you should now be able to see the panels from the road once that matures, I'm not suggesting that's going to be done immediately, it's a little bit of an investment in time if you want to use vegetation to buffer. The rest of the site along Frontier Road are the big white pines, and it's a dense green, you really can't see anything from it. The other entrance, up at the intersection of that Maxim Road and Frontier Road, is a little different, because, and I have a number four and a number five there, so the number four photograph, which is at the top, again, we have an existing, and then we have a proposed. The road configuration's going to change, it's going, instead of going in a way that's not going to make a hard left, so it's pretty much going to make the road look a lot of sight, and it'll give us an opportunity to plant. One of the big concerns with solar is shade, and there's certain requirements on the south, east, west, and towards the north, it's not a particular concern about shade, and there has to be a setback from the tallest trees, the panels, so they won't get any sun. So that's the issue, so if you look at our photographs five, five is looking at down Maxim Road, standing at the intersection with Frontier Road. And if you can see to the left in the existing picture, you can see through there, and you can see that some of the grass, field grass is grown, where the golf courses, where the panels will be. So we can plant along there and infill that, and that would be all in this area here. The houses, so then, as we come along Maxim Road, the houses that are across the road and to the east are mostly up in elevation, the topography slopes up to the houses. There's probably a hundred feet average of setback, and it's, it's all pretty densely wooded. There's some tree, there's a stone wall along the road on Maxim Hill Road, there's a few trees that are on the outside of the stone wall in the road right away, they haven't stayed, because they're on the town property. But that area is proposed to be cleared in order to allow, to address the issue of shade. So we're proposing that we'll plant where we can to infill in those areas. And these views are not really typically local, they're kind of, first of all, this road doesn't go anywhere it ends up here, so I don't know what the traffic on it is, but these homes here would be looking in that direction. So it's really more a matter of planting to, to fill in the gaps where people can see, and not just creating some big green wall that may or may not be completely effective or may or may not be even necessary. The house to the northeast is down significantly lower than the project site. So if you walked out of that house and you walked south, you come to a wall along the property, you went over the wall, the grade goes up really steeply, and I think Audi referred to the, the topography here, and I guess it was shaped, I'm assuming for a golf course with all the rolling hills and so forth, little hills, and some depressions that were at the stone water treatment and so forth. So we tried to minimize grading back there, to leave that mound, so that presently, if you stood in that yard, you can't even see into the site, the grade goes straight up. There's also a handful of evergreen trees over there, pretty mature, that aren't native and look like they were put there intentionally. I don't know why, I speculate, maybe just greener this house at one point, I don't know how old this facility, when it was built, but somebody put them there with some intent, and the idea is to try to leave them there, and then we can add more if necessary. And I know there's been conversations, I don't want to put words into these folks' mouths, but I know that the owners have had conversations with those owners, the owners of the house. So that's, and then, of course, the whole north side is all just wooded and unbuilt on. So that's pretty much the proposal, the areas we think need to be addressed, and what proposal to address in terms of the view.
Actually, I'm taking, I have a question, because this is my primary, I'm happy to start. So let me stand back and give you my objective. I don't want to see this at all. That's where I would be focused. So going through a couple of points that you talked about, from Ninety-Five, I'm not prepared to give you credit for the fact that the vegetation stayed right away, it's doing the maintenance, you can't control that, they could come down and cut it tomorrow. So you need to buffer on your property, which in my opinion means, you need to pull those panels back. You omitted-
Can I, can I?
Yep.
You're talking about on the west side.
Yep. You omitted the view from Route Three in your analysis. So as I'm on Route Three, I'm almost opposite the deal board that's on the west side of Route Three, looking at your site, completely dismal. I don't see any addressed screening of that sloped area that you, that we alluded to.
So between like, after, so, yeah, like in there.
So you're standing there, you're looking right at that slope, that someone just said they were going to regrade, it's way up here. So you need to figure out how to buffer that. Then at the southeast corner, I'm sorry, can you make your notes? At the southeast corner, the folks that live at that, generally around that intersection, it seems to be that you're taking credit for the vegetation that's on their property. So we don't, we're not going to look at it that way, at least I'm not. We're going to look at, you are required to buffer their visual impact on your property. So those panels, they have to be pulled back. The idea of using small trees to do your buffering, we made this mistake early on. I applaud your use of natural vegetation, but if you think we're going to wait for this thing to be screened, you might want to reconsider that. So go ahead and implement your small trees, but we're going to want to see some full-growth trees here buffering the visual impact, and we're going to want to see it right away. I do want to mention decommissioning, because the question wasn't asked. But the idea of this whole thing about, we can't have shade because the panels won't function properly, you're absolutely correct, I get that. You know what the answer is? Pull the panels back. Don't cut the trees, pull the panels out of the way, good job. And then with, with regards to decommissioning, it came up earlier, I just want to touch upon it while it's on my mind. So this is the, this is going to be a test case for the decommissioning, I know this doesn't have any flexibility. So you're going to give us your analysis, we're going to hand it to our peer review person, they're going to rip it apart, they're going to give you a new one.
Is that crosswalk?
We might let them start.
Okay.
But I'm not convinced that they have the housekeeping ability to separate against the city.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have, you got your hands full.
I have a comment on the buffer with regard to the residential land behind that, there's no mention of buffering, I, I know you said that there would be full grown trees, it's forested, but potentially that could be developed land. And it appears that these panels are going right up to the line, and that there'll be no, no arrangements made to support any kind of development. I mean, if I looked at a piece of land and said, do I want to build a house over here? Nope, it, it, somebody owns that land, and somebody might want to develop it, and we're talking this to the panels.
Here?
Inside.
In here.
Keep them.
In here.
In there, in there.
Oh, no, this is all part of, part of the golf course property inside this perimeter, and the reason that it's shown like that is it's proposed to remain, it's wetland, and proposed to remain as-
All right, that's fine.
So even these lots, if somebody did choose in the future to develop way in the back, which is not a typical development pattern, there's still a significant amount of education that would be made.
Good job.
It's a golf course or is it a driving range? You keep calling it a golf course.
It is a golf course.
I play golf, I don't know.
Well, it's a different, you mentioned maintaining and fertilizing and all this, it's a driving range, not a golf course.
Yeah, there are no sprinkler systems installed, so you can keep that grass, it's just driving.
Text card abilities and talking about, talking about golf courses, but it's confusing, another thing to talk about.
Right, well, but I think that some of the main points I made is, one, that's sort of clear, and two, that whether they're doing something now or not, this use doesn't require supplemental water, or fertilizer, or anything like that.
Thank you, board, anything else for this particular?
I, I would often want to echo Al's comments regarding pulling them back. You came here with a bigger plan, and making the footprint of the solar project smaller is the opposite of what's happened here since November. So at some point, we'd like you to hear the comments of the planning board.
Hi, I'm talking out.
Yes, of course, sir, thanks.
Yeah. Thank you. I just wanted to mention a few things. One, I would echo Al's concerns about buffering. In a site that is mostly cleared, I think there's no excuse for any clearing, I would like to see a plan with no further clearing when you have so much available space, number one. Number two, I think the buffers with all of the neighboring property lines do need to be increased, these panels should be pulled in more towards the center of the property. And lastly, this one isn't really your, your fault at all, but we're now faced, the planning board is faced with thinking about some of these projects in the, in the terms of cumulative impacts on the neighborhood and the surrounding area, because this particular parcel is very close to two recent zone changes from residential to commercial to accommodate solar farms, so, or at least large solar installations. So the neighbors that we've been talking about, the abutters that we've been talking about, are now, will be exposed if your project, you know, proceeds to a path work of solar developments in their immediate area, and I don't think we have a great solution yet for how to deal with the impacts on those individuals and those properties, but I just wanted to raise it. I think it's very important, and if I were a resident in this neighborhood, I would want the town to consider it.
So if I could just respond briefly to that, I hear those concerns, especially as the clearing makes sense. We are in performance with the ordinance, and as you know, the ordinance does keep to both maximum usable area of the lot and ability to clear, and we are within those constraints, and we have made sure they're within those constraints, but your, your concern is noted.
Your ordinance also speaks to making sure that the abutting property owners' concerns are addressed.
Absolutely.
Just want to bring that up.
The abutting property owners do have the ability to raise their concerns here before the board. I will say for the record that we did send a courtesy notice to, as a good neighbor, to be a good neighbor, we did send a courtesy notice out to five hundred foot radius of others, although it was not required for that very reason. We want to be a good neighbor, we want to talk to our neighbors, and we want to make sure that their concerns are heard, both here and if they want to speak to us privately, they thought.
Well done.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have anything else you'd be all right with?
Oh, beyond what I put in my memo for this, well, just, I just want to reiterate that the board does have the authority to kick back these things where they abut residential solar, it's right in the, right in the solar way. And the other thing I want to bring up too is that our development plan review ordinance says that within seven months from the date of the pre-application meeting, the board is supposed to come to a decision on this. So in this particular case here, we're looking no later than the June third planning board meeting. So that, that date is going to crop up faster than what we think, we in March already. We in March already. And the applicant might want to take, you know, in the interest of getting peer reviews done and, you know, modifications for plans and whatnot, the applicant might want to consider extending that date either, you know, either tonight or certainly when we get down the road a little bit further. Because it's kind of a tight, it's a tight time schedule, depending on how many times they come back.
True.
So.
Good point. Someone else?
I think just given noting the time, I'll try to wrap up and certainly we'll be here for any other questions.
That'd be great, because we still want to go to the audience.
Absolutely. So just to get back to the question about containment, environmental concerns, I took a look at the Sage report. And the transformers will be located on equipment pad that includes containment sufficient to contain at least 125% of the fluid found in the transformers. And then later on, the report concludes containment system will protect soils from the release of any transformer fluid should leak the carp. So both of those, that report is in the record. Just to summarize, a couple of other important things from that report as to environmental. The project will conform to the noise ordinance. And also, the environment impact statement does conclude that there is minimal impact on critical environmental areas. There's obviously much more information in the report. Any questions? Our representative from Sage is here. Also Scott Rafferty is here for Natural Resource Services, our wellness expert. So with that, we're very answering questions.
Very good, thank you. So first of all, Plenary Board, any other thoughts or questions from the board staff? So is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this application?
Harvey Buford Conservation Commission. I hadn't seen the plan as in a detail before, so I was looking at it here. But I recall when the GAFPAV was approved, that's why I kind of waved my hand up, that I remember the boundary between the primary and secondary aqua protection areas runs through there. There's also a, trying to remember the status now of the well for the prevailing restaurant and how that qualifies it. And also the frontier campground, which is over on Maxon Hill Road in that general vicinity, is also a public well of some type. Maybe non-commune, non... It would be a transit, I think, because it would be a campground. So those are a few things to think about. There was a best man practice plan adopted by the applicant when they put the GAFPAV in. And the GAFPAV, I know they didn't have fertilizer, if any, they had no fuels on site. They had a lot of things that they had done because of the concerns of that location. And then I'm just looking to the north there, where I do remember that's quite a bit of extensive white lands. That would be an, it would be great if that small, relatively small area there could be left out of there as a buffering. It would be nice if there was some kind of permanent easement put on that area so that we know never in the future will that area be disturbed. Just a momentary comments.
Very good. Thank you. Not in view of what Mr. Buford said. Would it be appropriate to ask Scott Thompson about his well? He's the owner of the Camp Town. Because he did mention their community water supply that they have. There's no town water in that area, it's all Thompson stuff. Not that it really matters, but you know, it might crop up later.
Just from my own interpretation, where is that relocated?
It's up here, Matt. It's up higher, to the right now. There you go.
Okay, okay. Let's see it.
It's a ways away, but there is an apple where there was a, under that property.
Okay. We'll certainly take a look at it, and if Sage needs to update their...
Can I speak out here?
Absolutely. So it is in a wellhead protection area, and it is in a non-community fertile well water. However, this site, it's not going to use any herbicides, softens, it's not going to use any fertilizers or anything like that. All the treatment to any of the grasses or that has to happen is going to be mechanically done. And the oil in the transformers, it is going to be in a containment system to do it. So there's no pollution that can happen. There's no waste generated at the site. So there's nothing that would impact the well waters in that area. So it was, we looked at it as part of the...
Jim, thank you. Can you speak on that?
Yeah.
Jim, if you recall last month, there was a solar developer here who claimed that these solar panels contain nothing hazardous to the environment. And I would suggest that in this particular instance here, I'd like to see the applicant specify exactly what product is going to be used here for a solar panel, because there are different ones. And I'd also like to have an expert come in and break that solar panel down into every single component that's in there and provide an assessment of what could potentially, worst-case scenario, go warm or rust or whatever, okay, to contaminate. I'd like to know, I'd like to know exactly what type of threat that panel poses to the applicant.
So if I could just respond to that briefly. At the end of the Sage report, there are several inspections that get to, I believe, just the information that we're talking about. And the report goes through all of the specified equipment that is going to be used. And that was analyzed and looked at and reviewed as part of the environmental report.
Does that answer your question? You asked a pointed question, I got kind of a sketchy answer.
I agree. I agree with that assessment.
Let me clarify that...
I want to know particulars. I want to take that thing apart and dissect it.
Yeah.
Molecule by molecule, I want to know what's in that thing.
Right, so if you look at the end of the Sage environmental report, there are, I'm going to have copies if you want. There are inspections on all of the equipment, right down to every last detail and every last component of every system that's going to be on the site.
Okay, so that's great to show us a cut sheet. The other part of Jim's question though, and perhaps the most pointed, was we're going to have an expert, it may not be tonight, but at some point, tell us everything about the panel that's being specified at this site. Is that going to be you?
Yeah. So part of, so the panels themselves are made of glass.
Yep, I understand.
And so all of the, because I, there's concerns that people have brought up about there's metals in there and things of that nature. They're intact, and as long as they're not damaged, all of that material is in there. It can escape to the environment. So if someone comes with a sledgehammer and attacks it, then yes, then it can be exposed.
It's not, it's not that complicated. Listen, I've been on solar projects myself. I've been, I've stood there and seen the smashed panels on the ground. Damage happens. It doesn't have to be somebody with a sledgehammer. Jim's point is well stated. Specify the solar panel. Get somebody to stand up here and tell us what's in it. If there's something that we need to be concerned about, I expect you to address it. If there's nothing to be concerned about, then that person is going to be the person we come and talk to when things go sideways. It's pretty simple. Just like you've done with stormwater, just the way you've done with your landscaping. You want the same kind of expertise to back up your panel.
Absolutely.
I would like to see an MSDS from the manufacturer of the panels.
I'm sorry, can I say?
I'd like to see an MSDS from the manufacturer of the panels.
Sure.
Okay.
MSDS technical data sheet, whatever content you can provide so that all of us, with our different levels of understanding and expertise, can piece together what it is that we're looking at in advance of your expert coming in and chatting about it.
Sure.
So any questions, Jim? Is the expert, are you working for a chemical engineer? Are you looking for, if there are chemicals within it? I just want to be, so I can hire someone, so I can give you precise answers to your questions, so that you can understand it.
Well, first of all, this is sort of similar to the previous application we had before where a typical roadway section was there, okay? I've seen many sheets like this before that could be construed as a typical solar panel. I want a firm commitment. I'm looking for a firm commitment. You can give me a technical bulletin like that with a typical solar panel in there. I want, I don't want a typical solar panel. I want to know precisely what solar panel you're using on here. I'm familiar with a couple of manufacturers, you can. And I want to know, I want to know what's going on that site. And then I want somebody, maybe a manufacturer's representative, maybe a chemical, whatever, wherever it takes. I want you to break it down. And yes, I'm pinning you to the wall here, or attempting you to, because I want to, I want to address the concerns that are out there in the public. Because there seems to be some wild concerns. Either these, these panels are very harmful to the environment. We have some people in the public now saying, "You know, you can't even get rid of these things. You have to take it to a special landfill site with the nuclear..." Look, look, let's put all of these things to rest right now. Break it down. A chemist can do it, if you, if you needed a chemist.
Yeah, let's do it. I totally agree with you. As I've done with all my projects, there's the same panel. LG, top of the market. We'll have someone from them, or a chemical engineer come in and do that. But LG has reclamation, you know, they're a Fortune 500 company. And they have, when I buy the panels, including that, they have a reclamation program. So I buy it, they take it, they dispose of it. So it's not like a lost, a lost rock here. Very few panel manufacturers that do that. So I get what you want, let's drill down on it, and we'll get it, okay?
So you're saying there would be no problem with decommissioning this site? At some point, they'll take these panels 30 years from now?
They take the panels, they do much more than equipment on site, or the panels just only. So decommissioning, I don't want you to change and decommission it. Keep the commission process. I'm not saying, I'm just telling you that we go through great minds and spend money to deal with tier-one providers to prevent the atmosphere of distrust or lack of knowledge when we're using, you know, tier-one equipment. So I get what you're saying, and we'll get, we'll drill down, and we'll get you the answers, okay?
Can, can you provide some kind of documentation from LG?
Do we have their warranties that they all provide to the...
Oh, we're talking about the decommissioning.
Yeah, yeah, I think it would be helpful. Decommission expert, you know, it'll only enhance what we're trying for, obviously, yeah. No problem.
Okay, excellent. Anyone else with questions for this particular applicant? Yes, sort of, I'm here first.
Thank you. I just want to raise a few concerns. And I think some of them have already been raised already by members of the board. I think there are various stupidly expressed. I'm very concerned with the impact of the project on the surrounding area. It seems to me it's going to be quite visible from many different perspectives. It also, we have a little, it's going to have sort of a global impact on the town. As you know, the rural character of the town is something that we safeguard. That goes through the comprehensive planning, even on housing subdivisions. We have various, you know, constraints on how many trees we cut and stuff like that. I think the point was, I want to emphasize the point I think Al made, that, you know, the vegetation that belongs to the people on their own lots is not a buffer. You know, for the project, anybody that owns a lot has the right to do whatever they want up to the border of their lot. So that should not be on them, that should not be counted as part of the buffer. I think this area here is going to be really problematic. You know, this is quite a steep elevation. You're going to be looking through this whole staging area uphill. You're going to get an eyeful of these panels. And one of the things that I have noticed on all these projects is we really seem to minimize any discussion of the impact of this point at which the power attaches to the grid, you know, these massive poles. I know that residents were promised on the Alton Bradford Road project that you'll never see it from the street, you'll never know it's there. It's a nightmare, and it's owned and operated by the same developer. These poles are going to come right out to the street. They're probably going to even be visible from Route 3. And then this whole neighborhood now, you know, if you turn the corner on Maxon Hill, you're looking at another 60-acre solar site. So I think we need to be sensitive to the fact that these people that live in this entire neighborhood, you know, their approach to their property is to go past an industrial power plant, past another industrial power plant. You know, so this whole neighborhood's been transformed. And I just want the board to be, to be sensitive to that. Let's see. You know, on the decommissioning issue, I was very happy to hear that LG has a reclamation program, you know, providing quite a lot of material to this board. Really, the overwhelming issue is that so many millions of solar panels are being erected. It's not really, I mean, this is a global issue. And this is happening faster in places like China and Europe than it's happening here because they're ahead of the curve in terms of the installations. Japan, China, I gave the information to you on this. But it's just, it's just not going to be feasible to put all these things in landfills. You know, they're basically going to have to be reclaimed and recycled. And I gave you some research, this is all new, you know, because the solar panels haven't been around long enough to degrade, you know, in the field that much. But, and they're different types. And some of them incorporate different types of materials, some of which are more toxic than others. But they can degrade, they can be damaged. We had a huge tornado in Nashville, you know, in the past few days. We have hurricanes, we have hail. And we just have normal degradation. When these things come into contact with the ground especially is when they start to, that integrity of the glass and everything else is, you know, starts to be compromised. And that's when it becomes an issue. That's why you're not going to be able to put these in a normal landfill or anything, including just the sheer volume of them, okay? So if, you know, if LG has a reclamation program, I think, I think as good citizens, I think we just have to stand here and realize that these things are going to need to be recycled and not junked. And so we need to, we want to make sure that that's the standard that we have in this town. And that that's going to be a requirement, however that's done. And we should examine this reclamation program and find out, you know, what kind of commitment that really is and how safeguarded that is. Or if that, if we're not confident in that, then we want to make sure that, you know, there's some other provision in our plan to make sure that it's done. You know, this is a new area. It's very hard to determine how much it really costs to recycle a lot of these things because there aren't any giant-scale recyclers because there isn't the volume to put through the big plants. You know, no one's going to build a plant and wait for 20 years for the volume to materialize. But currently, there are some out there. I gave you some information on some of them recommended by the solar industry, Solar Trade Association, really. And it looks like the cost of recycling is, you know, with the shipping to the recycling plant at current rates, which may come down quite a bit, who knows, is around, you know, 25 or 30 bucks per panel. So this is a 14-megawatt project. Depending on, I don't know, if you're going to use 350-watt panels or what, but you're probably talking 2,700 panels per megawatt. If it's 25 or 30 dollars, you're between 950,000 and 1150 or something. You know, we're getting close to a million dollars of cost at those rates for, you know, decommissioning. And that's why I think it's really important that we investigate that. So I think if there's a reclamation program by a manufacturer, might take care of that. You know, but we have to make sure that, we have a way to make sure that that stays in place. I do have a concern, I just want to mention, the, you know, this town just approved the project two days ago. And I don't know whether the people in this room and on this board are aware of it, but on the Maxon Hill project before it, the town council stipulated an amount of the decommissioning reserve is essentially handcuffed to it. At least that's the way that this board and our council is interpreted, was that you were not able to make your own determination on the appropriate cost and the appropriate methods and so forth. Just two days ago, the town council did it again. They proposed and approved an ordinance that stipulated that the decommissioning cost would be $25,000 per megawatt.
AC new.
Yeah, that's, that is woefully inadequate. I don't know why the town council, the town councillor who proposed that is sitting in this room and has sat through all these conversations on decommissioning and the decommissioning workshop that hasn't happened yet. But I don't know why. You know, you need to talk to your counterparts on the town council because the town council just did it to you again. And I really, they're not going to be involved in this project, but I just, I just want to say that it's really a matter of high concern. Last issue, noise. I've never spoken to this issue before. You know, our, our noise ordinance, I believe, is... You know, our, our noise ordinance, I believe, is probably very inadequate to, to projects like this. This is a special kind of noise, you know. The, our noise ordinance, I think, is forty decibels at the boundary. But this is industrial noise, you know, at sixty hertz. Our, we, in, in our rural area, rural nighttime noise, here in the winter time, is going to be on the order of like twenty-five decibels. And every ten decibels is doubling, and loudness, it's logarithmic. So twenty-five, thirty decibels, you know, it's very quiet around here. Forty decibels not only is loud, you know, it matters whether the twenty-five decibels that we hear now are louder, is crickets or frogs in the springtime, or whether it's ninety-five, or whether it's transformers. So, you know, our ears do differentiate these things. And, you know, one sound doesn't perfectly mask another, this is going to cut through. Forty decibels is really going to bother some people, you know. And there are many, many documented instances, you know, put a lot of these up like Cape Cod, where it's really, Martha's Vineyard, where it's very quiet. And they're having some pretty significant problems. I know in Martha's Vineyard, one resident lost his mind and, you know, took a fire axe to the transformer or something, survived to tell about it. But, you know, the, there, it, it really is an issue. And I think that, I don't know whether you have the latitude to evaluate the noise and impose a constraint because of the quality of the noise. It's not just the loudness, it's the quality of the noise, to investigate whether or not that constraint is really adequate to protect all these people, you know, who are going to go to bed at night and possibly have to listen to that. So I think that's it, I just want to check real quick. Those are my, those are the three issues. I think you've really named, you've highlighted these issues, and I think the setbacks are going to solve a lot of problems. One of the things, wetlands. I, I hope we're being very, very, very careful. Water flows downhill. You know, this whole process disrupts topsoil. There are no roots anymore, just sort of transition period, wild grass or whatever just grows. And there's a significant amount of silting from all these projects. And, you know, I would hate to think that, that we're going to slowly be filling these wetlands, you know, damaging them, so I want to be really attentive to that. Thank you.
My name is Patty Devigere, and I live at one fifty Maxon Road. And I have a problem with these solar plants, these places you're putting in. I mean, you know, they come up here and they say, oh, we're going to do all these wonderful things, and we're not going to disturb anything, and we're going to put back all these different trees. And the pecker puts these trees back, they don't even know what's there. When you've lived here for only fifty years, you know. I mean, I live a quarter mile from ninety-five, and I can't hear it. But at six o'clock in the morning, I can hear the gravel trucks going up and down Maxon Hill to that mess there. You go to the end of the driveway, you used to see trees, you didn't even know there was a hill there. And now it's just a mess. You've got all kinds of dirt, you have, we went off for two days, we come back, and the water had turned brown. And we have a very good filter system, so we had to reset everything. And this hasn't happened before. It's only been since it started putting these solar things in. They're talking about runoffs. My kids used to go ice skating on the puddles that are down, going down the hill on Red Deer Road. They're not runoffs. And you, they, they just don't understand the way of life of being out here. I mean, they come from the city, they don't care. They're making their money, and they're going to go away. I mean, if you don't live, just look at Maxon Hill, it's a mess. You used to be able to walk down the road, now you've got all those trucks, you've got all the wind coming down off the hills. I, I just don't understand why they're letting this go on. I don't. And, you know, it would just be nice, I mean, you've lived here forty years, and all of a sudden you see a bobcat running down your stone wall, where'd they come from? We've never seen them before. You're taking everything away. Not only from the people, the birds, the animals. You, you're just destroying our whole neighborhood. And it's all been within a year? Is that fair? I don't feel that it is. And I think these people should take this into consideration. And you know what they think it's so great? Go put it in their backyard. I don't have a problem with putting it in their backyard. Leave mine alone. We had enough with the water, and now they're going to make a mess. And that's all I've got to say.
Good, thank you. I have something to say. You keep saying that we're doing this, every advisory, since I've been on the board a year and a half, every advisory opinion that we've given to the town council has been in your favor. You as the public. And not you, but other people come up here and they're giving us a bad time without the planning board, doing this and doing that. We've been on your side the whole time, you're really trying to make friends, aren't you? That's all I got to say.
My point is, they say they're going to do one thing, then they come up and they make a complete mess.
And nobody's disagreeing with you.
Well, that is my point.
And you keep saying, we're allowing this, and we're doing this, and we're giving that.
I said, they are.
We've been in your corner the whole time, the whole time.
And they have come here, and they have made a mess.
Okay, okay. Was there another hand here, first of all? I saw that one first, so just bear with me. Yes. You can yell instead.
Because I only have one, two things, but again, on the decommissioning, if the town council voted at twenty-five thousand a megawatt, a hundred and ninety thousand is nothing. It should be more like three seventy-five. The other thing is the pictures of the, for the landscaping. All, since I leave zone, I see the pictures. The pictures have eight feet tall trees. Are those really the trees they're going to put in there? Are they going to be there eight feet tall immediately, the way he has it on his drawing?
That's my intention.
That's, that's what I'm seeing, that, on that drawing. So, that's my question. Thank you.
So, just bear with me for a moment. So, it, it was alluded to earlier, I may as well tell you, that this, this idea of the town council setting things like decommissioning amounts and buffers and whatever else you think you can do, as of this point, I'm prepared to override that kind of stuff. So when this applicant comes before us, the one that you just approved, they're going to get a whole different look at decommissioning. And if they don't like it, I'm going to direct them to come back to you. And they can fight about it in your court. Because this is just unacceptable. So that said, there was one more hand out there.
I just want to say, I'm one of the neighbors.
Come right down here, come right down here, please. Special dispensation of you.
I just want to say, I'm one of the neighbors on Maxon Hill Road across the street. We are sitting up higher. I want to thank you for the letter, so that we could come up here and reject to this project. I can tell you, I can look out my window, and I can see the motel at exit ninety-three. So I can see, I mean, I can see the golf course or driving range. The last thing I want to see are more solar panels. If this had come before the devastation on the other side of Maxon Hill Road, I would say it's clear lid, that's the way to do it. Do I think it should come back? I definitely agree with you, it has to be pulled back. I need more trees, because right now I can see. If this had been the first project, I would support it. You know, but after seeing the devastation on the other side, I can't get it on the floor at all. I just want to let you know that we do.
Anyone else in the audience?
Just one real brief comment. The chairman mentioned that where, no one, no one disputes that this is manu, it's own manufacturing and that solar is a permitted use on manufacturing properties. So this isn't a zoning question. But you did mention, and I just wanted to, I meant to remind the board of this, that that was a very important comment that the chair made. Where manufacturing zoning property is zoned for manufacturing of lots of residential property. You know, this, this board does have the authority, and I would argue the responsibility, to manage that intersection very carefully. Because, you know, people in the residential zone have amenities, you know, like views and kind of the sort of noise that they expect in a residential zone and all of these other things. Those rights and those privileges, or whatever you want to call them, you know, they're very real. They're, you know, this is a very sensitive thing where one zone meets another. And you do have the authority, and I think the responsibility. So I, I think we've kind of like, I think we, we missed the boat collectively on, on a project like Maxon Hill, where the developer built right out to the, to the setbacks. You know, there was no reason to have permitted that developer to build all the way out to the maximum permissible setback, right? And that he didn't have that right to do that where he applied for residential zone. We need to manage that process. So I believe that the setbacks for this project, where you need the residential zone or whatever you determine to be appropriate, you know, they aren't seventy-five feet, they aren't fifty feet, whatever they are, they're, they're whatever you determine to be appropriate as a, as a, as a board as a whole. And, and, and one of the things that you take into account is this intersection. So I just think that was another very, very important point that was made, and I urge you to take that to heart. And I'm not attacking the planning board, and I hope you didn't interpret my comments, because I'm not.
Anyone else in the audience on this one? I see no hands. Eight hands. Yes, sir.
My name is Ken Berger, also live at eleven fifty Maxon Hill Road. We've been in and out of planning meetings and in and out of town council meetings since all of solar began. And we recognize that this board has fought a losing battle against the town council and has been on the resident's side. But when you get a situation like Maxon Hill, and now this one's going to be the same way, you come up with all these stipulations, and all these regulations, and all these ordinance requirements, and then you're ignored. And no one does anything about it. That's all I have to say. Maxon Hill, they have no dams up there to contain the water that they expect to have. Little old dams where they can pull out jersey barriers, pull them out to allow the water to flow out of the road. What happens then? So I don't know who the board is, whether it be the police department, DEM, just useless in my mind. Somebody needs to say, no, you can't do it, stop. Pull the truck back. Because it's not happening. And it's ruining the whole nature of this town.
Okay, thank you. Okay? What's our direction? Continue? Okay? Yes, of course, I'm sorry.
I think one of the things that we as a board know is that decommissioning is yet to be defined, and it's different for different projects. I.e., LG has a, will take the panels back. So for the blanket comment of decommissioning, to have this lively discussion about recycling the panels, I know that when junk cars are removed off your property, they go to a junkyard and it's somebody else's problem, but my neighbor didn't want to see that car. So in my mind, the decommissioning is breaking down the project, removing everything, all the structures that have been put in there, et cetera. Once that project owner takes the panels and the metal out, it's really their responsibility to figure out where they're going to go. And that's a bigger discussion than Hockington. It's a state and federal issue, what do we do with these things? You know, we have a lovely project out in Nevada that is miles wide, and it took too long to build it before the technology was obsolete. So they've got the mirror in the sky. It's, it's still there. It's somebody's business. It's not bothering any neighbors, but it's somebody else's matter to decide. The, the project owners own the land, and they, they walked away from it. So we can't necessarily tell a project owner what to do with their panels. What we can do is we can tell the project owners, at the end of your project life cycle, you have to return the property to the state that it was in. And we have to make a contingency plan in case that owner walks away and says, here, Hockington, now you deal with it. But planning for millions of dollars in decommissioning when this is an unknown science doesn't seem appropriate either.
I agree with that, could I agree? Could I make a comment on that?
Only if it's like microscopic in length.
Well, so I said before, I don't think it's appropriate for the board to try to determine the cost and take the risk and accept the cash escrow. The issue is, where does the developer go to the panel? If he has nowhere to go with it, that sort of becomes part of the risk and part of the cost. I think the appropriate answer is for this town and the board to stipulate a bond, you know, from a reputable, you know, from a reputable guarantor, and then you don't have to worry about it. However, however it's handled, you don't have to run into that risk that, you know, I mean, he can only take them somewhere if there's somewhere to go with them. You see what I'm saying? And we don't know what the future cost is going to be. So I think the appropriate solution is for us to get some sort of a performance bond.
Which we do.
We don't, get a cash escrow.
Okay.
Since we have an interest in expediting this, with the board being, being able to do a motion directing the applicant to begin peer review with Crossman? Because I don't, I, I don't know where we go with this. Out of that, I mean, what, what do you want the applicant to do?
Council, where would you like to go?
May I? Sure, I, I think we'll talk to Crossman, we'll go through you, Jim, and we'll engage him, we'll understand what you want us to accomplish. So I know what expert to hire or not hire. And if I need to get the manufacturer involved, I will. You know, I will reach out to you. You know, I, I understand this, we're, we're creating, you know, he is a mess. And, you know, I, I, you know, I'm willing to collaborate on it and try and find a path to it, and hire the experts, and pay for the experts, so the question is answered, the answer. Just one thing, at nighttime, I think it was a good point made, in the night, when the commercial levels go down, when the system, when the sun's not out, the system doesn't operate, and there's no noise. During the day, when the sun's up, when there's activity, ninety-five and whatnot, I, I agree, but they're muffling that, but at ninety-five, it's a lot harder for a project. But at nighttime, the project's silent.
Just from a procedural standpoint, I don't know if this helps, but I, I think we've heard a lot of comments. We've heard a lot of things that we need to now go back and take a look at, some big, some small, and some in between. So I think that it might make sense, if the board is in agreement, to continue this to attain certain. At that point, we would do our best to come back to you with all of those questions and concerns resolved or answered.
Want to make a recommendation, is we talking thirty days, sixty days, ninety days?
I would prefer to keep it moving. If we could put something on the calendar for thirty days, and then if for some reason, your planner is not, you know, wants more time, wants more information, I have no problem continuing it again. But we would like to keep it moving, if that's okay with the board.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a sense of how this is going to take place here. Now they, now they did get a lot of comments tonight. So I guess, if I was the board, am I expecting these folks to come back, alter these plans, and then we'll see what they bring, bring us in a month? And what if that's, I mean, I don't know, I mean, is that what we're going to do, is like, no, we don't like that? Or where do we go? I mean, are we going to give, are we going to give the applicant some direction to go get some, get some peer review done now? get some, get some peer review done now in conjunction with that? I mean, I don't know what we're expecting to see next month.
I can answer that. It's easy. We need to do what we ask. Now, if at the same time, this is not the only topic, other members might have another perspective. If in the meantime, you want to begin to coordinate your peer review for things like stormwater and those scientific things with Crossman, I would say move forward in that direction.
Absolutely.
But you have significant revisions to be made in my mind.
I agree. And if that's the board's desire to have this project go to peer review, we would suggest that we start making those changes and have your peer reviewer come in at an earlier point rather than a later point so that they can be here in addition to us being here to present on any revisions as well.
I see it as an iterative process. They're not going to come back and get it wrong. No disrespect intended. It's not going to embody everybody's concerns in a one fell swoop. I just don't see how that can happen.
I'm looking at it from my perspective, like planning the project as well. And I just want to let the board know what you're in for over the next one to two years, night after night after projects like this, okay? Because that's what I see in the pipeline. I see big ones, I see middle-sized ones. We're going to go through this night after night after night and this is just solar we're talking about. We're not talking about the people with residential project. We have a residential project coming up next. We already had one tonight. Okay, people want their line of subdivisions done. How about this cluster that was just here, okay? We can't put the world on hold while we do 10 more of these solar projects. That's what I see coming up. And you think this is not the end. I just wanted to give you a little preview. This is not the end at eggs at one with solar, okay?
That said, Jim, I don't know any other way to do it. If you have a proposal, I'm happy to hear it, but it's the way projects evolve.
All right, well then, so they're going to leave here tonight with no direction to get peer review and they're just going to come back 30 days from now and we're going to be looking at something up there and God knows what it's going to look like, right? Is that what?
That's not what I recommended. I suggested that, I think it would be, actually, I'll state it, I think it's in their best interest to initiate peer review now. But you can't have, you can't have peer review on a project that's not finalized. They can only do so much, right? That's why I suggested stormwater and...
And I would expect that moving through that process with Crossman, we would have Crossman here or you would have Crossman here the next time we're here to go through some of those elements. And if it makes sense to you, we can certainly have Crossman involved in the revision so that if you have additional questions or concerns or other ideas, your peer reviewer would be here as well. That's all I'm saying. I think you're going to have your peer review, let's have the peer review chair on that.
If I were the person funding this project, I would take everything that was recommended by the community and the planning board's part of the community so we're no more special than they are, except we take it on the chin when things go wrong. If I wanted to be financially responsible, I would say get Crossman involved. I'm going to take my team back. I'm going to listen to how the footprint's too big and this little piece really should go and we need more buffering. I would be serious about that instead of wasting all this money, right? You're wasting the money, not me. But it's an exhaustive time for everybody. So can you take those recommendations 100% seriously, go and make this a viable project for you and then come back? And on that note, Jim had made a recommendation that you extend your application period. It sounds like he knows better than us and maybe you should.
We certainly have a few months before that and we're not against that, but given we have until June, we have plenty of time to discuss that. I don't imagine that's going to be a problem at all.
So are you suggesting a collaborative process here where Crossman attends all these meetings with the planning board and yourself and we collaborate on something that suits the planning board? Is that what you're suggesting?
What I, I guess I'm asking is that if the board is putting this project over to peer review for Crossman, I want to be clear about what the Crossman peer review is going to be. Because I agree, there is a risk that if they're only peer reviewing certain aspects of the project, that means we would come back in 30 days, show your revised plan, Crossman still wouldn't completely be involved and it would be kind of a stutter shot and I'd want to try to avoid that. I'd rather see this project move along in an efficient manner. And if you want Crossman involved, then I think we need to make that decision. And I think that includes decommissioning as well. Let's have that conversation with Crossman sooner rather than later.
Jim, well, I just want to back up one step here to a couple of meetings ago. I suggested, this is exactly why a project of this nature, which is a commercial project, should be reviewed as a major land development project. Because after this preempt that we had, we would go to a master plan where that master plan would be tweaked and shaped and everything else to the board's satisfaction. And once you get the setbacks laid out on that, on that concept plan, then you have something for Crossman to really dig into and look at. And again, I would suggest that when we do a peer review, they review the whole thing as I've said, including coming up with a realistic decommissioning fee for this so that we can nail this down right now. Stormwater, every other aspect of this. Matter of fact, I recommend when Crossman does things, of course, they know anyway, but they look at our solar ordinance. Does this, you know, concur with our solar ordinance and all the requirements there? That's what they start along with development plan review. So they look at our regulations, see how close this mirrors that. It's not, you know, it's not that far off, to be honest with you. It needs, it's my right, okay, there's no, but I mean, I just want to facilitate the review here because I just see, I'm telling you right now, what this board is going to be in for the next two years. Next two years, you're going to be going through this night, month after month after month. And so in order to clear the deck that I have on future agendas coming up here, I'd like to see this thing get to the harbor matter as soon as we can, get it approved by the board and move it on and we'll get the next one in here. Because that's what I'm looking at. I'm looking at an assembly line of projects and you're going to see an agenda with the next month or two, there's probably going to have 10 items on it. Now, you know we're not going to do 10 items in one night. So 10 o'clock is going to come on the clock here and some people who have prepared and brought out experts and everything else, they're going to be disappointed when they say, you know, we'll have, we'll see if we can get down to next month. And then next month, there's going to be another compilation of things. It's, I just see a nightmare coming for the next few months. So prepare for that event because that's what we're going to be faced with.
Jim, Jim, I've lived through this before. It doesn't, it doesn't frighten me. That said, we can't just say, "Oh, hey, I got a project coming next month. Approved. Done. Get out of here."
Didn't say that.
That can't work. This project has to evolve in its own timeframe. Now, yes, it would be nice if it moved along quickly, but I can't force the applicant to embrace some of the comments that we made tonight. They might come back and meet us only halfway or guess what? We're going to go at it again. I don't know how to short circuit that process. And the fact that there are going to be 10 items on next month's agenda, I certainly appreciate your position. I don't say for pretty long. Been here before.
I'm not saying just approve it. All I'm saying is, is let's, let's get it done. Don't leave, don't let applicants leave here mystified or say, gee, I wonder what I should do. Oh, I'll just, I'll just do this, that, little tweak, we'll come back next month.
Are you mystified?
No.
You better not.
Not at all. I think what we should do, I've got great suggestions here. As soon as we can engage with Crossman Engineering, they better off with it. We'll take all the suggestions we have, done here tonight, and we'll share them. You'll have to develop revisions, obviously, and we'll share them as soon as possible with Crossman so we don't come back in here with a surprise to you, right? We'll have something better and we'll have, I'm sure we'll have access to talk to Jim and the clarifications and stuff. But we took notes and we listened to what we have to say. So I would like to move in a swift direction as you're suggesting, but I only can do that if I can engage with Crossman. So I'm asking permission more than anything.
I think what I'm going to do is write the check.
Yeah. If you have me on record, we'll do that. We've done it for other projects in town and out of town, so I get the process. And, you know, Crossman is, you know, they're not easy, but they're user-friendly. They're very smart people and we get to the end of that, you know, so.
I have a question now because I wasn't clear with all of your discussion. How much do you want them to pull it back? I mean, so you said pull it back. I mean, what does that mean?
Again, so toward that end, I was going to ask if we could arrange to have, and again, I'm speaking only for myself, I don't want to impose on anybody else's time, a site view specifically with your landscape architect. Because I believe that a quick walk around through this site, perimeter, referring to the perimeter. We stand at box one and we say, "Here's what I see. Tell me how you're going to address that." We go to box two, et cetera, et cetera. So rather than leave your experts with, well, I'm not exactly sure what they had in mind, let's meet there. It can be a public meeting, a site viewer, that's not uncommon, and everybody will have the answers they need.
Maybe our neighbor across the way there came as well, question left as well. Maybe you could come to see so that way you could...
Is that sound reasonable?
It's reasonable and I would appreciate it because it would be helpful.
Just to, just to give you guidance because if you come back and you're like, "I thought I did what you wanted."
It's real, it's field guidance versus paperback.
And it shouldn't be on a rainy day. Okay? And feel free to bring coffee.
I'll work with your plan. We can pick a couple of dates and we'll coordinate.
I would suggest that you do that as quickly as you can because that's going to get you, get your experts, you know, on the treadmill by the way.
It's actually, to do something like that, I did it in another town, the attorney general that involved because of open media laws and stuff, so our parents, our lawyer will make sure we do all the right way and, you know, may have to notice it, so.
I'm not afraid of the little meetings. You'll do it properly, of course.
I just wanted to do it right. I don't want to change.
That's very smart for you to bring that up.
Well, I learned it the hard way.
So do we need a motion to continue to a day's earth? Okay, let's make that happen. And that would be to, by the way, not April 1st, but April 8th.
I move that the planning board requires peer review of the project by Crossman Engineering. Such comprehensive project review.
About continuation of the project to my next meeting, April 8th, et cetera. Simple. To a continuation of the project to my next meeting. I have a motion to that. I have a second for discussion. Hi, I'm opposed. So thank you very much.
I want to hear on the board's end. Everybody asked me, kind of. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It deserves it. I'm so funny. I know. We look at this thing, I'm like... It's going to build out to the ground.
Okay, folks, we have, so they have one more item to add. All right. Our next item is new business. It's a preliminary plan, three lot, minor subdivision, AP 17, lot 12, 135, Fairview Avenue. Mr. Bremian is our applicant.
We're just hoping for the, one hundred global flight and maybe we'll get Jim to fly.
Okay. Jim, would you like to fill this in? I don't think everybody was here when you first came.
Let's do this.
I thought we don't have a talk.
Well, it was not a talk yet. Okay. What we have is a proposed three-lot subdivision, cutting two frontage lots off of Fairview Avenue. This project has come before the board as a pre-application a while ago and there was no objections stated by the board at that time on these lots. Pretty simple. The applicant has gone forth and gotten OWTS permits from the state for two septic systems and that, so they're pretty much fixed where it is right now. Both lots have the minimum furniture area required by zoning. You know, outside of that, there wasn't very many comments at the preempt for the applicant. It's a pretty simple subdivision, so I just leave it out in a very simple memo here to you that I recommend that the planning board approve this preliminary plan and delegate final plan review to the administrative officer. Don't know really what more there is to say. You?
No, I think you missed four, seven.
Questions from the board?
Questions, good.
No questions.
Okay. So in order to do this right, we as a board have to state we have found positive findings with these seven items.
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
And so do we have members who would like to read through the items? As Jim had stated, Mr. Bremian has met, it agrees with the comprehensive plan and hears the zoning and so it's done all of these things. We just have to state that we have found those findings. So I can read it or would somebody else like to?
Last time.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, all right. So the planning board has made positive findings of the following. That each subdivision is consistent with the requirements of the Hockington Comprehensive Community Plan and satisfactorily addresses the issues where there may be inconsistencies. That each lot in the subdivision shall conform to the standards and provisions of the Hockington zoning ordinance. That there will be no significant negative environmental impact for the proposed development as shown on the final plan with all required conditions and approval. The subdivision as proposed will not result in the creation of individual lots with such physical constraints to development that building on those lots according to pertinent regulations and building standards would be impractical. That all proposed land developments and all subdivision lots shall have adequate and permanent legal access to a public street. And that each subdivision shall provide for safe circulation of pedestrian and vehicular traffic for surface water, runoff control, pursuable building sites and for preservation of natural, historical or cultural features that contribute to the attractiveness of the community. And lastly, that the design and location of the streets, buildings, lots, utilities, drainage improvements and other improvements of each subdivision shall minimize flooding and soil erosion. So we have found positive findings, so I'd like to make a motion that we have approved the preliminary plan and made this seven and delegate final plan approval to the administrative officer. Motion?
Second.
I'll take her. Thank you, sir. Hey, thanks for hanging in there.
I thought there was a chance for...
Oh, there is.
No, there isn't. I'm not done. I, I, I have not, I have got to that we like...
He's listening.
None. Planner's report.
Oh, did you want to comment about this particular subdivision?
Yes. Oh, 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 I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We missed that. We got a little too quick there. Oh, yes, please come on.
I'm Carol Clon Peterson and I live at 119 Fairview and I am directly behind what is actually, I guess, lot three of the three lot. First, I want to commend you on including stormwater mitigation in the plan, but I just want to make sure because in the time that I have lived there, I've discovered that the soil is very slow to absorb rainwater and it tends to collect on the surface and runs down towards the pond. And it tends to collect on the surface and runs down towards the pond, and in the process cools against my foundation. We have done a great deal of regrading of our property to take care of that on our lot. And I'm very happy to see that there are drains associated with this plan. My concern is, and I just want to say that when this does go to final, I just want to make sure that those drains, actually, this is, I guess, has a typical cross-section of the drains. I just want to make sure that the actual drains are large enough to contain all the rainwater that these large houses will produce, and that they not have a secondary outlet above ground, which currently is how it's drawn on here. I want to make sure that all the water goes into the drains under the ground, and the dry wells handle it, so I don't end up with it in my yard. That's my main concern.
They are already designed, it's on page three of that document.
Is this different than the one we looked at?
It was on there all the time.
No, no, they're on there, but they have a secondary above, and they just say typical.
That's what the state has done, they did.
Right, but this design has a secondary drain above grade. And this doesn't have any specs as to the size of the drain or how much water it handles.
This is from the state manual.
That's why I figured, these are just copy, that's why it says typical.
But if you go over here, it tells you the size.
Okay, there's the size, but this is what I'm concerned about, is the above-grade drain. I want to make sure that's underground, so that the water doesn't wash across the yard and into my yard.
I have no problem not putting that in.
Okay, I just want to confirm that, make sure that's written. Because I'm tired of mucking in my front yard. I worked really hard to fix that. And now, it's like, I don't want to see all that stuff. Because it does, it all runs right towards the pond.
So you live on the other side?
No, I live right here.
Oh, okay.
So this lot, and this is downhill.
Yep, yep.
So it's all going to the pond. And it comes across and sits right up against the foundation here. And what I, I rebraved in the front of the house to mitigate that, of our own way. But what I'm concerned with is, these two houses are fairly large houses. So the runoff from that would add to what's coming my way. So I just want to make sure that in the final plan, when it comes to you, that that is answered. That's my concern.
Absolutely.
But I'm really happy that you put the drains in. Because without that, I'd be in a swamp.
Oh, required not to have any runoff going on.
Okay, I wasn't sure whether that was a rule or whether, I was just happy to see it.
So it has to stay all the way on that property, right? Because you have to do the calculations.
Right. But I just was concerned, because the drawing of the cross-section shows an above-grade discharge.
Sure.
And I've dealt with enough downspouts to know, they clog a lot. And to have extra runoff from clogged gutters or whatever, to add a secondary chute on each of these downspouts is going to land in my yard.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry I missed you earlier, but we got it aired, so that's good.
All right, that was my concern. And the other thing was just a point of clarification. Whose formula is it where they figure out the population on a lot? Is that a state, or is that a local?
Population on a lot.
One of the good things that's on here, it says, when you do a subdivision, it says every lot contains, or on average contains, 2.22 people and .53 school-aged children.
I'm sure that's a state calculation.
But what I'm trying to figure out is how you do that by lot and not by bedroom. Because that kind of makes no sense as you're looking at not this kind of subdivision, but we're talking when you're doing big ones, to do your calculations per lot.
Well, I think it's assuming that not everybody's going to have a child, and so they average it out, and so that's...
But a four-bedroom house?
I understand, I understand, yeah.
I'm just being logical, that's all.
For sure.
They'll average it out over the community. They'll take the number of dwelling units in the town, right? Number of dwelling units in the town. They'll divide, come up with the number of school-aged children in the town. You get that information from the school district. And you do several divisions, you come up with a, you know, 1.5.
Yeah, because I'm looking at this going, okay, they say there's going to be, in these three lots, there's going to be two school-aged children. There already are.
You don't know, you're going to build a house. Somebody's going to build a house, they're going to build either a three-bedroom house or a four-bedroom house. God knows who is actually going to have that particular house.
I just wondered how you got to a formula that was...
We do it on a townwide basis, townwide average.
It's not, it's not per lot, it's basically townwide. Okay, that was my question.
It's speculation, it's an average. We don't know who's going to live there. It will be limited by the number of bedrooms. The number of bedrooms is going to limit how many people are going to live there.
Yeah, but that, it's by lot is how this is, I don't know, the thing is written by lot, so I figured it had to be just a townwide average. That was my question, just because it didn't make sense to me.
Sure.
On now.
Okay, Jim, okay. So planner's report was done, so correspondence and updates?
Yes, we have a wonderful little letter here written to the planning board, from Ms. Sandra Boyveda. And regards, Liliana, who did a wonderful presentation last month. So I'd like to read that to the board, for the public. Dated February the 6th, 2020, a note from Sandra Boyveda. Dear Hopkinton Planning Board, I am writing to thank you for allowing Liliana to speak during the public comment section of the pre-application session last night. She has a very valid concern and was able to present it in a heartfelt manner that adults often struggle with. I believe allowing her this opportunity has played a valuable role in her education and will play a role in her future endeavors. Therefore, I would appreciate it if you could give her the enclosed note and want her to know how much her input was appreciated. Sincerely, Sandra Boyveda.
Wow, that's wonderful. Thank you.
And with your permission, I would like to give this to probably Liliana.
Absolutely.
And they can keep this as a memento, because after World War II, they can have it.
Absolutely, yeah. Where are you going?
There's a lot smaller than you.
Thank you. So that brings us to public forum. Anyone else wishing to speak? Harvey Lee Dunn? Would you like to say something, you're waiting to the end?
I want to tell you something.
Absolutely. It's not quite ten, so.
You know, the big solar project proposed upon the public circle, and I brought up the marigatus trail up there. And we've been, we, I'm sort of part of a team, Appalachian Land Club, which I'm not even a member of, is really pursuing restoring that trail system that were about 22 miles. And gone to town of Charleston, met with the TIS person, Stephen Camus, and met with members of their land trust and the conservation commission. And they put a really nice slide presentation together showing, you know, the history of the trail, where it was, where, you know, we started working on all the little issues that exist in kind of putting this thing back together in a useful way. And Steve blew me away there in Charleston. They have this very big screen thing, monitor, that's up there. And all those presentations and stuff, they're all digital and stuff. And the audience can, you know, during the council chambers, can see what's going on. You can walk up to this thing, and you can, you know, you can be yellow, and you can circle something in yellow right on the screen. Stage right there, you can do screenshots of that sort of stuff. You can mark things up for the applicants. It's a wonderful tool, and apparently it costs about $3,000 bucks, this big thing. And I just, a couple of years ago, I went up to Exeter, to Solar Orlando, whatever, to see what they have, and they're low on Exeter, I mean, we're a big town compared to them. And they had screens up and stuff, and everybody could see what was going on. And it's not, you know, it's not that, it's a wonderful tool. And, you know, I know we're really watching our budget here, but boy, I should wish we would go with something like that in this town. So I don't know where, maybe you have to have two screens, you know? One facing you and one facing the other way, because, you know, just the way it is. But something along those lines, let's get a, let's make some progress from that.
My take in.
Sorry, you asked?
No, absolutely, I, no, I like it, no, it's, I agree with you. I think it's only been recently where we have needed that with how many folks that are coming, but I think we wish we would have had it, and some of these lodgers are needing. So I think your point is what they do.
I know if the plans were digital, I hadn't even seen that solar project. We just had a logistical figure, and Penny Patrick sits back there for the conservation commission. And every night, he gets a physical set of plans, so, I mean, sometimes I'll ask him, and he'll lay them on the floor and take a camera picture of it, you know, and it's kind of wrinkled a little bit, this and that, but he sends something to me that way, you know? So it'd be nice to have stuff in a digital fashion anyway.
Yeah, good point.
I have a suggestion for you, Harvey. You as a private citizen and being the chairman of your committee, if you were to approach one of these project proposals and say, hey, it'd be a nice gesture if you did this, that, and the other thing in that direction. It may work.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Let's just raise your fees a little bit, maybe.
That's a better idea, raise the fees.
Does anyone else like to speak?
I guess I have a question, I don't know if it's for this board or somebody else in general, but when we have these projects before us, I heard some numbers a couple of months ago, I forget where I was, but are we at our max? We're assuming that any new development is going to benefit the town. That energy coming from the solar panel is going to benefit the town. And we are in capacity, that the amount of solar project we have in town is 100% of what the town needs, meaning, why are we taking more solar inquiries?
Talk to those three people in the council, please.
Okay, if we've already reached potential, who is the benefit of these new projects?
They view it as revenue. They view it as revenue.
Thank you.
Why are we going to start having a conversation if it's not benefiting ultimately, it's benefiting the town, I guess?
You know, but as a, as a member of Hopkinton, you were, I think that would be better served at a town meeting, you know, stating that in an open forum. Because I think that, I mean, we do have that right as town members to voice our concerns when we're in that capacity, so. Okay, anyone else?
I'd like to say I'm going to listen.
Oh, thank you.
You already said it.
Right, we'll invite you to after-hours activities, how's that? So the date of our next regular meeting is April 1st, 2020? Oh, April 8th. Yeah, all right, April 8th, 2020. And so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A second? A motion and a second, all in favor?